Nellie, you have to go and take care of the mic.
All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Newington Town Council regular meeting of Tuesday, August 8th, 2023. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 7:03 PM. If you would please rise, if you're able, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Next item this evening is one call, please, Susan.
Here.
Counselor Danahue.
Here.
Counselor Minkie. Counselor Nagel.
Here.
Counselor Raddam.
Here.
Here. We do have two counselors that are on vacation this evening, so we are running a little slim tonight. All right, next item this evening is approval of the agenda. I believe we do have one addition that we need to make. Deputy Mayor Verdrick, if you would.
Yes, I'd like to add the Connecticut Recreational Trails Program grant application to as new business. I believe we'll be following item eight, it'll be item nine, and then subsequent renumbering of the items below it.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the addition? On the agenda as a whole? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero, counselors Minkie and Nagel absent. Next item this evening is public participation. Any member of the public, either online or in person, is able to speak to us. If they would like to come forward, you can raise your hand in the Zoom application, if you'd like to be recognized. We do have a three-minute time limit that we try to adhere to, and there is a timer on the screen to help gauge that timeframe. Attendees' window. There is no one with their hand up, so if anyone in the room would like to come up, you're welcome to. Seeing none, we'll continue on. Next item is email correspondence, which I don't believe we received any.
Nothing for publication.
Okay. Next item is remarks by counselors on public participation, which we had none, so we'll continue on to consideration of old business. And the first item under old business this evening is disband inactive committees. I believe, counselors, you'll see in your packet, we were provided with a memorandum delineating an update for us on the 150th Anniversary Steering Committee. They have supplied a historical book detailing the tasks that were undertaken during the anniversary celebration, including some memorabilia items, and the chairperson has indicated that the final report will be available to present to the town council on September 12th at our meeting in September. And then, if you'll notice also for Town Hall renovations, PVC, they held their last meeting July of 2021. The project has been completed, with any outstanding issues being addressed through the Facilities Department. The School Code Compliance Committee last met in March of 2021, and that committee has been tasked with several different projects since its creation in 2010, and both of those committees are working on finalizing their final reports. Is that adequate? James, is there anything else we should add?
No, that's completely accurate. I am still working through on previous information and some recommendations for either consolidation or disbanding of committees for you. So that'll be future.
Excellent, thank you. Any comments or questions, counselors? We'll continue on. The next item on our agenda this evening is the John Wallace Middle School Renovations Project. Our goal this evening is to introduce a bonding resolution and set public hearing date, and we need to discuss the date of when we want to set that for. So right now, the agenda states for September 5th, 2023, but I was just asking, James, and I believe Mike Patello is on the call, but let me just double check.
He is.
I am on.
Great. We were thinking about canceling our August 22nd meeting, but I'm noticing now we're adding the September 5th meeting to accomplish this, so I'm just wondering if we... James, help me with the language. It's if it's a five clear or five straight days for...
You can just address it in chapter 406 of the Charter, when it indicates a full notification in the newspaper, five days' notice. Are you considering that to be a clear five days, or do you include the day of the notice appearing in the paper in that count?
Normally, you can count one of the days.
Okay. So in that aspect...
I mean, I'm not looking at your charter, so unless the Charter provides otherwise, by the step, in terms of the statutory count, you usually will count the day in which the notice is made, and then you count the next four days. So usually, you count, you know, I usually count one of those. So yeah, because, yeah, that's normally, and so unless your charter provides otherwise, that's the common way in which you would count the legal notice requirement.
Okay, yeah, we just indicate five days' notice. So that would mean we could advertise on the 17th and meet the requirement to still hold a public hearing on the 22nd.
Correct.
Okay. So that's part of our discussion, counselors. Unfortunately, that's the item that's next on our agenda, but in terms of setting the resolution for the bonding and public hearing date, we just kind of have to have that discussion during this item, as to whether we keep the 22nd and don't have to worry about a special meeting on the 5th, and just stick with our schedule versus canceling the 22nd and scheduling on the 5th just for the purpose of this item.
Yeah, the 5th is a day of...
Right.
I'm sorry? 5th is a day of...
Wait a day, so...
It's the first week of school, like back to school and all that, and it doesn't affect, you know? Yeah, I mean, we were doing it because they're really, if you notice, there's no new business. We thought it would be a reasonable thing to do, but if we're going to have to schedule a special meeting anyway, then I don't really see the reason to do that. Continue with the 22nd.
Yeah, keep it.
Everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Good.
All right, so that'll be our next action after this, but I just want to make sure. So for the purpose of this item, we would be looking at setting the public hearing for August 22nd instead of the 5th. All right, now on to the actual meat and potatoes of this item. As we discussed last time, we were trying to come up with the appropriate figures to make sure we were being both fiscally responsible, but also allowing for an appropriate amount of unanticipated need throughout the project. So, Mr. Hucka, do you want to give us an update on what you...
Yeah, very quickly, in summary, worked very closely with Dr. Brummett and Mr. Jakomolich, which I got his pronunciation right for once. Thank you. On both the cost estimates and the schedule, and this is very difficult, I mean, we're looking at establishing cost estimates, tight cost estimate to run throughout the project before design even starts, and especially for a renovation project, which is very difficult, a lot of surprises, a lot of unknowns, until we get into construction. But nevertheless, we had to put together the referendum language, which requires a set number for both the total project cost and the amount that we have to bond. The cost estimates we arrived at serve that purpose, and down the road, as we work through design and construction, we'll have cost and schedule controls in place. All that will fall into place, we'll arrive at a very detailed scope for the project and move forward like any other well-worked project. I look forward, thank you for your help, and look forward to working with our friends at the school on a successful project.
And so, counselors, you'll see in the packet this evening, we do have the language that indicates that the appropriation for the project would be $10,997,600 after the anticipated reimbursement, which I believe, Mr. Hucka, you're figuring this at a 50%, even though we're anticipating 57%, correct?
Yes, and it won't work out to 57% of the total project cost because of ineligible costs, and so that's the difference.
And so you'll see in the resolution that we are looking at bonding an amount not to exceed $5,498,800. That's the recommendation that you agree with, and Dr. Brummett and Lou, you agree with those figures? Okay. Comments, questions, Counselor Page?
Thanks, Mary. Just a couple for clarification. Is the term "project unforeseen" the same as "ineligibles"? Is that used interchangeably?
No. And I originated that figure. We had a construction contingency, which is for the construction phase, which is absolutely necessary for a renovation project, so that when they open a wall and find a pipe that no one knew about, this is for unforeseen's even before that.
Okay.
Again, putting together cost estimates before we start design, we haven't locked into a design scope, haven't, don't even have a designer on board, can only guess at what inflation will be between now and then, not just general inflation in the economy, but specifically in the construction market. So those are, that's for true unforeseen's. If we're lucky, we won't have to use them.
Right. Another question. That's all I have, is the ineligible's. I thought the number that came up that got us all to catch our breath for a second was 600,000, at the last meeting, if I remember correctly. Is that constant with tonight's proposal? Consistent, or has that been altered or changed?
It is. A lot of that figure was contingency, which is ineligible until it's used, and then some of it will roll over to contingency. So I kind of, in putting these numbers together, as you can see, just made one column and made sure a lot of that is addressed in using 50% for the bonding instead of 43%.
Right. Okay. And that gives us cushion.
So the short answer is it's accounted for in the philosophy behind the estimates.
Perfect, thank you, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Verdrick, go.
Yeah, I appreciate the fact that, you know, the three of you coming together and years. I kind of related to Counselor Page's, and it doesn't impact necessarily, I mean, it doesn't impact my opinion on the resolution, but I was curious, and I think maybe Lou, you can answer this, in terms, I guess it's this two-part. When you first initially gave us the three estimates with the three different cost figures, I guess I need to know, first of all, what is included as an ineligible? If you can give some examples.
Could you come to the microphone when you answer? I'm sorry.
What isn't considered an ineligible? Because I would think an eligible carries, it's the same amount of ineligible's, no matter what option we had gone with, but in your options, depending on the option, the actual dollar figure attached to ineligible's changed, depending on what option we went to. So if you could just explain to me what ineligible's are and why it would have changed?
Okay. If I had the chief from the state that gives the list of ineligible's, it's just about as thick as the dictionary of everything they might exclude because of things that are in the regulations and statutes surrounding school construction, and the way the grants are written, and what are required exclusions. So you have a number of, the most simplest thing I can describe is anything that they'll consider as a repair that's integrated with the work is a potential ineligible for you. Any work that happens to be done off-site, which means the ownership of the property would be excluded, like if we had to go in and do an MDC correction or modification down the street from the school, those costs would be excluded, and it's just the way the project would work out. So a lot of times, the amount of ineligible is probably in the 2% to 4% range. So a unique set of circumstances at the table of what will be considered reimbursable by the state and what will not, and unfortunately, we won't even get the first glimpse and hint of what they would actually consider ineligible until it goes through the review process of the state, which is, you know, say, four to five months after the architect starts working. So everything up to then is just an educated guess at best.
Okay, so you base it off of like a percentage, but you really don't know until the state kind of goes through their checklist, it says, good, not good.
I can see which ones are major issues and what are minor. Everything here is a minor issue that could be an exclusion, but then again, you know, replay the tape, and I come back in a year and everything's fine.
Which is why the amounts changed in your three options, because it was based off a percentage of the total cost.
Or amount. In any construction estimate that's put together, when you have contingency or escalation, those are unknowns into the future. So until they become real, they're considered an ineligible. So there's $2.5 million or so based in contingency and escalation in any of the proposals that you're looking at, somewhere in that general area. Those all start out as ineligible, and then as you add scope to the project, like, okay, we're going to put in a higher grade of windows in the building, and we're going to spend another $400,000 doing it. Those $400,000 become eligible, and it comes out of the ineligible category. So as the money slides over from unknown status to known status, the eligibility of the dollars goes with it. So it will slant over as we go. If we're very fortunate and can bring the project in below budget, you're not going to get reimbursed on money you don't spend. So you have to, that becomes, it's not really an ineligible, it's just a non-expenditure. So you're, everything gets resolved, all of the contingency and escalation numbers have to be reverted to zero by the time you send your final filing in. So everything will get resolved from the state's perspective, and there won't be any lingering money that we have out there as a commitment on the project or a potential commitment that we'd like to get paid for, but we never spend the money on it. So that's about as short of a... I gave these documents to Mr. Hucka last week. They're paralyzing to read.
It's a little muddy, but it helps, thank you. And I think when we talked last time, there was about 7% in contingency already kind of built in, right?
The escalation factor.
Yeah, now we're adding some tonight based on the recommendations that you all came forth with, and we're funding it at 50% with reimbursement of 57%, so really 43% if everything were eligible, which it's not clearly. So hopefully, there's enough of a cushion there that we feel like we're safe, right?
We'll be fine.
Go ahead, Counselor.
You figure out who the contractor's going to be after the bidding, can they just buy all the materials at once, and you don't have to worry about that escalation in prices?
Right.
I believe it's going to be a strategy. Correct. But the initial approach to the project was three phases, three different years, and that would have accommodated pay-as-you-go arrangement, if that's the direction the town council chose to pursue for it, since you have legitimate efficiencies and suppression of cost escalation by merging the timelines down. You know, it's clearly the best approach.
Now, are you capable of moving kids around and just say, do all three wings at the same time?
I can't make that decision.
At the end of the year, give them an early end of the year, or move them to an empty classroom somewhere else, and then same thing, if you're not going to be completed in September or the end of August, find a place for them. You'd save a lot of time and probably a lot more money, too.
Right. Well, I was hoping, right now, I know we have enough capacity in the building where we can reallocate kids and close one wing at a time, and without having a significant disruption to the operations of the school. And how we build out the project design, where the first summer that we're working, we can get things done in multiple wings, where it'll help suppress time windows for Wing Two and Wing Three being done. But that has to be evaluated when we get there. We can't do that now.
But if we get the right contractor and they have enough manpower...
They can certainly, you know, accelerate the pace, absolutely.
That would be part of the bid process, maybe. This is what you need from...
Yeah, we have to...
Can I? Just a quick question, I'll acknowledge you next. If I'm remembering correctly, the timeline that you mentioned last time was to start the project in the summer, like as soon as school's out, there as close to it as we can, but you were saying that that first phase would go into November, right?
Correct. If you start at the end of school in June, Phase One will go to sometime around Thanksgiving.
Right.
Phase Two would start after that.
But if we did all of them at the same time... We'd have nowhere to put students from September, October, November, right?
Right, unless we relocate them to another building realistically.
They don't have space in other buildings.
Right.
What about schools?
I mean, that's quite a big disruption, I would think.
I meant other schools.
Right, you've got Kellogg that might have a couple, and it's still a middle school, and...
As we, believe it or not, our schools are quite filled because of specialized programs, so they're really...
Okay, I'm just, you know, portable classrooms.
No.
I was going to say, you want to talk escalation costs?
Yeah, really, that's going to add to the... And I'll tell you, from an educator perspective, that would be detrimental to the educational process, in my opinion. That's my opinion. But as an educator, I just can't imagine teaching in that condition of being shifted around and that kind of thing.
I mean, you seem to be doing very well with doing rentals right now, so we're, you know, moving kids around.
Yeah, that's within, that's one at a time within the same building. That's different than using spaces throughout the, and then you're disrupting the community environment of a school, too, and you have kids at one building and another building, and that sounds kind of chaotic, but...
May I introduce shop class again?
Counselor Page?
You're in the bench, Coach.
I'm going to the next question.
No, and I think we all continue to want to obviously look to get the most for our books, so I don't think anybody should be criticized for that, but I think we do, I thought we did agree we were going to go concurrent, consecutive, not concurrent, for the very reason primarily that we didn't want to disrupt teaching and learning, and we were squeezing as much juice from this lemon as we could. So I'm satisfied with the plan as it is.
And ultimately, all of these detailed issues, detailed scheduling, and opportunities for good ideas and better ideas, both cost and scope and scheduling and all of it, are still yet to come, because, again, I can't emphasize this is not, I've never done this before in my whole career, I have to come up with a real tight estimate before design. And so all we're, you know, all we're asking for tonight is a cost estimate for the entire project, cost estimate for how much we need to bond, and then we, and Lou has a lot of work to do, going into the future, to work out the details of how to make the project as efficient, tight, and well-thought-out as possible. So there's still a lot of water coming down the stream.
Little questions, counselors? Are we ready to move to school?
One more.
Go ahead.
In the future, I mean, we have a permanent building committee. Set aside quite a large sum of money for design work for projects, then it can be brought ahead of time, you know, when we're talking about these things, like you basically already know what you want.
Within limits, yeah.
Yeah. But it's something for us to think about and talk about, to have that there, because you could have done some of this possibly already, some design work and...
Architector, and then that, mine is conceptual work.
Right. Hire the engineer and architect, and say, here, this is what we're looking at. Help me out here, I need some drawings.
That was the foundation for this, where we just commissioned a simple two-line conceptual drawing outline based on the parameters we gave the architect to do, and that gave us...
To our permanent building committee before they'd come to us.
It's been a state grant, we've been involved, so...
I think we'd have to look back at how we ordered it, because it is new to all of us, but I believe that it's, we can ask the building committee to look at projects and prioritize them for us, but ultimately, it's, it would come to us to determine if it moves forward. So the building committee doesn't have the power to move it forward, it ultimately comes to us to do that.
But if they looked at it ahead of time and said, it is feasible, then we have more information to go by to move it forward.
Absolutely. Yep.
Yeah, no, I've always been a big fan of when you work on a project, soup to nuts, and you have the same team in place, and so they understand how it was developed, what the intent was, all the way through to ribbon cutting, so it makes sense.
And this will be the first project that we're going to refer to that committee, so this is only to all of us, so this new process. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. So folks, we have the introduction bonding resolution in our packet. Who would like to go ahead and read that in for us?
Resolved the introduction bonding resolution, and the appropriation of $10,997,600 for the John Wallace Middle School renovation project, and the financing of said appropriation by the issuance of general obligation bonds in the town and notes in anticipation of such bonds, an amount not to exceed $5,498,800, as well as establishing a date for referendum introduced by, it resolved that the town council of the town of Newington hereby schedules a public hearing to be held in person and through the use of Zoom webinar software in Newington, Connecticut on Tuesday, September...
August 22nd.
Excuse me, Pink.
Nope.
On Tuesday, August 22nd, 2023, at...
6:00 PM.
6:00 PM, to your comments on the foregoing resolution. Be it further resolved at the town clerk post and published notice of the time, place, and purpose of said public hearing, along with the foregoing resolution in full, in accordance with the provisions of section 406 of the Town Charter.
Second.
Second by Counselor Anist. Any further discussion, counselors? Questions, comments?
Again, thank everyone for your leadership, working together. This is the way it should be, working together. Thank you.
Exactly. Fresh air.
It is. All right, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero, counselors Nagel and Minkie absent. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Counselor Page just took... Next item this evening is the amendment to the adopted meeting schedule to cancel the August 22nd, 2023 meeting. Counselors, I'm assuming we're going to forego that and move on to our next item, correct?
Correct.
Next, item, sale of town-owned property, 690 Cedar Street. As you know, we had originally passed a resolution to authorize the previous town manager to take action on documents related to the sale of the property. Because we have a new town manager, Mr. Hucka, we need to re-authorize him to take action on executing any documents related to the sale of 690 Cedar Street. So we do have a resolution in the packet to go ahead and take care of that. Counselor Danahue?
Sure. Resolved, Newington Town Council hereby authorizes Tom Hucka, town manager, to execute any and all documents necessary, complete the sale of town-owned property located at 690 Cedar Street.
Second.
Second by Counselor Raddam. Any discussion on the authorization of Mr. Hucka? Counselor Page?
I know you're all sick of hearing me say this, but I'm going to vote in favor of this, because I think it's good for the town, but I think it would have been even better for the town if we had an official appraisal on the property, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other counsel comment? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero, counselors Minkie and Nagel absent. Next item this evening is amendment to information and guidelines for boards, committees, and commissions, and we have a lovely color copy and color coding going on. As you all remember, Deputy Mayor Verdrick brought forward to us at our last meeting some recommended draft language to be considered for addition to our boards and commissions booklet related to the role of liaisons. And so you'll see in the attached document, in green is the language that is recommended to be added, and there are some changes you'll see to the page numbering and other areas of the policy where it is referenced and changed. I did notice that there are a few other changes made, which I'm assuming came from you, James?
You did.
So the red strikeouts, and then green would be the new language, and then there are also some red that are not strikeouts on, from what I understand, those are recommended changes. I don't know who wants to speak first in terms of...
Ironically, I didn't give myself a color copy.
Oh, well.
So I'm going to go off the screen.
You're at a disadvantage.
It's easier for me.
There you go. Teamwork.
All right, so...
Oh, hold on, can you hurry? Go ahead. I'm just, when I passed it out, or when we discussed it at our last meeting, I was also just wondering if anybody had any feedback on the language before we vote or whatever on approval, yes?
Did you want to do that, now?
Sure. Yeah, I see Counselor Raddam's got her hand up first.
Yeah, I read through, you know, I was very pleased with, and all of the changes or additions, corrections, whatever were made, the only suggestion I have is on page 13, liaison to, even though it says to facilitate communication between the Board of Commission and the town council, I would prefer that we say council liaison, so that it's very specific.
Okay.
Otherwise...
Everybody on the table, go ahead, shake of the head.
That's right.
Great suggestion. Counselor Page?
Thanks, Mary. My, I don't know, it's a...
Thanks. My, I don't know if it's a concern even, but it could be, given our history in the last couple of years with sometimes getting into a dispute over appointments on page three where it says, at the beginning of each term, the council agrees on council liaison assignment brought forward by each party. I think it's important that we strive to agree, but I think the language in other documents, and James and others will correct me if I'm wrong, is that we don't, we sometimes have to agree to disagree, don't we, that the party still reserves the, should, I believe, majority and minority right to appoint their liaisons. So I don't, I don't, I don't know, I just, I don't know, is that clear enough to people that we still reserve that right unless there's some extenuating circumstance that, you know, requires us to get into a debate over it?
Go ahead, Gail.
I had that, you know, in mind when I was crafting this, but the council liaison is only gonna be a counselor.
Yeah.
So it's not like we're bringing forward anybody, you know, with some of our three interested possible counselors in the future who aren't counselors. A counselor liaison is already sitting at the table, so I find it hard to
Okay.
understand how we would say, well, no, I don't want Kim on.
Right, right, right.
Give us two.
No, I just wanted to clarify if there was any potential problem with that, but like I said, it's not even a concern, it's just, yeah.
I was gonna say the same thing, because we've never had issues with council liaison appointments within our body ourselves, so. And usually we talk to each other to let them know who's gonna be liaisons, so everybody's like kind of on the same board, and you've served previous years, then you're on it again, so. But I was gonna say exactly what Gail said.
Thank you.
Turn it over to James then. Was there any other questions or comments on the language that Gail had provided?
Very good.
Thank you for your work.
Very good. That was a lot of work, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, James, you wanna go through the things that you're recommending as well?
So we'll start on page.
What was the blue?
Blue was already there. Those are actually hyperlinks into our, either our code or our charter, and that's on the online site.
We'll explain hyperlinks later.
Thank you, Mitch. Twenty years.
Recommendation that was made was on page two regarding two changes to the words authorities, where we changed that to authority or authority shall, just to clean that language up slightly. Of course. There, we can change it. Of course, section twenty-two point one point three point four is the language applied by Deputy Mayor Padre. Of course, you guys can have that discussion as we move through the revisions to this. Our next page that we will get to on this would be on page five, and we are looking at language that was changed for, I'm trying to remember what.
My original book says, hold on one second.
I know, I was surprised to see elected official was included, because there's no removal procedure for an elected official.
And that was the reason, that's exactly it. We don't have a removal provision in our charter or in the state of Connecticut, except for in very limited towns that were in effect prior to, so my recommendation would be removing elected officials from the end of two point five.
That was gonna begin with.
I thought, thanks, I thought under the charter, it explicitly states that if we're demonstrating in our, by our conduct, in such an extreme partisan manner, that it can be grounds for removal, right?
Not that I'm aware of, I noticed we moved. Procedure for folks on committees and commissions, but not for elected. So I don't know if there's a section you wanna cite.
I don't have it off the top of my head, but having gone through the charter only a couple of times, James Yeah.
knows it well, I thought that.
Yeah.
We don't, we were exhibiting such extreme behavior that was either of a partisan or unacceptable nature, it couldn't.
I, I think from what I remember in the past, it was only if you were basically convicted of a felony crime by statute, by state statute, you could be removed, but I don't believe there's language in our charter or in state statute that would support removal of an elected official in any other circumstance.
For the social media.
He's thinking of?
You recall this, and this goes back into our old building, we actually took the action to remove Mr. Arbor.
Yes.
So he was an appointed member, so actually under chapter four twelve of the charter, we have a remove on suspension section that is not relative to elected officials, that's to appointed officials from this board, not.
Thinking of Robert's rules, which does, I think, state, the degree of partisanship may require removal from the discussion or from the room itself.
And Robert.
Robert's rules.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that is a little bit different than a removal from an elected official. There are other states that do.
Social media comments. This is how, or maybe at a social media committee.
We had a large discussion.
Yeah, this is how it got condensed to this, unfortunately.
Yep.
And I think this is critically important. I'm glad that we're, having us be accountable, both on social media, but also here to make sure that our language and our comportment is consistent with equity, diversity, inclusion.
Well, no, he's actually recommending taking that elected official out because, and because, if I understand correctly, the language there says cause for removal
I see, I got.
for any appointed or elected, so you would take out the elected, because we can only remove appointed.
So you wanna take out the word award too?
Yes.
You don't have that highlighted.
So the next section.
Wait, hold on one second, because.
It was answered.
Okay.
Good, okay. Next section is on page nine. On that section, all of those meeting rooms specifically relate to our former building, which at this point doesn't exist any longer than has a parking lot. So we are still working out what the names will be for those rooms, but we will bring that forward through to you. Of course, the council chambers one, not, no longer considered the E. Curtis Ambler Room, but in this aspect, it's room one oh three here now, so. We'll make the requisite changes to you if you're in agreement with those. You'll see that I sort of made that small change in the lower paragraph, where we changed it from conference room L one oh one to council, town council chambers room one oh three. After that, you'll notice on page ten, I don't think many of us are still using.
Related to that. Counselor Camillo?
Naming of the rooms, wouldn't the name from the old town hall come over? It should.
They don't translate back over, although we did see that happen under the original project for the Mortenson Community Center, as well as the Helen Nelson Room, but they should have been brought back to the naming committee for renaming of those rooms. That's actually one that I'm going to be requesting come before the naming committee, which is to re-nominate the vault to Ed Ceraman. Right, that's something I will be wanting to bring forward.
And that's, we should do for all the rooms. I mean, it's the history of the town, and that's why, what they did for the town, so we named the rooms after them.
Okay.
Yeah, but we can, we can put that through to the naming committee and have them review those.
Counselor Page?
May I circle back to two point five? I just, I don't know, I feel a little unsettled. If we're talking about public comments in any form that contain racial slurs expressed bigotry towards a group based on their race, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, or any other legally protected classification, it may be considered conduct unbecoming a town official, may constitute good cause for removal of any appointed or elected official. I understand the reasons just given, and I don't dispute them for removing elected official, but can we put a brief statement in there saying that at the very least, any of us who are accountable to the residents to uphold the highest ideals of our cause, that we be at least brought before the ethics committee if we're engaging in bigotry and racial slurs, or something like that?
But we struggle, I will tell you, I remember when we created this policy, we struggled tremendously with this, because we felt the same way, but because there's no process for removal, we struggled with what we were able to do, so, and the ethics, you'll see under two point four, proper official conduct for ethics, it does state, you know, well, it still says by definition, officials of the town of Newingtons are required to become familiar with it, you have to know your, basically, you have to know the code of conduct. Wow, ethics policy, phew, and anyone can be brought to ethics at any point, that's always an option, so I. I think we just struggled back then, and Carol, you were on.
I was on, but, yeah, I mean, we had legal opinions and everything, so it wasn't like we just did a broad brush, because we did not.
We pulled.
I mean, I know Diana was like pulling her hair out, trying to get the proper language, but, you know, you're also under two point three, you have proper, you know, official conduct of members as well. I mean, it doesn't give any repercussions, but, you know, you're supposed to act in a professional and dignify.
Say council words and things.
Right, yeah. So, but believe me, we did. If you go back through the minutes of those committee meetings, there were extensive, extensive conversations regarding that.
Well, I'm not gonna vote against this. Have we voted?
No.
Or this is just, okay.
No vote yet, because you guys haven't approved specific language yet.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just going on record as saying, I think that it warrants a simple mention of of a recommendation for any one of us being brought before ethics in the event we engaged in any of these absolutely atrocious behaviors. And so I'm not gonna argue it all night, I just wanna be on record as recommending that, so.
That, I'm certainly not arguing with you on that either, and content. It's just a matter of making sure we represent it.
And we're not doing anything that's.
Appropriately, yeah.
Not, yeah, in accordance with our charter or the.
Ethics Code.
Ethics Code. Because we have an ethics code we have to abide for, abide.
I guess I'm here to just suggest we make it explicit.
Okay.
And if there's language we wanna consider, we just have to have a suggestion for it.
Yeah, before we move on, I'm looking at this, members of BCCs, which are the boards, committees, and commissions, don't we, in light of what we've just been discussing, wouldn't we also want to include council, members of the council, boards, committees, and commissions, or it's two point four, by definition, officials of the town of Newington.
Well, I think the.
I just, well.
I'm feeling uncomfortable that someone, someone could be, just in plain English, be led off the hook.
Yeah, I think because.
I'm just saying what I remember historically. Historically, when we created this, it was really to govern boards and commissions. It wasn't intended for the elected body, the name of the book and the reason we did it was to make sure we had rules in place for boards and commissions. So I think that's why some of this is. You know what I'm saying?
However, however, we're looking at liaisons, and council members are liaisons, so.
Maybe that shouldn't be in here. Maybe it should be under our rules and procedures for council members.
That's actually a good suggestion.
Deputy Mayor Padre.
I disagree. I think it could be included in the rules. But both, but it needs to be in here, because the, the officers and the members of the boards and commissions do not understand the role of a.
I totally agree, a hundred percent on that.
It has to be in both, both places, yeah.
But I think, definitely think that there might be some ethical implications in the responsibilities of a counselor, and that when you set your rules and policies of a council, that's where that should be, not, not in this. Because this hasn't, this really doesn't guide us.
I see what you're saying, yeah.
This guides, this was intended for boards and commissions. There was a smaller book, and Gail was on the committee when we did this. We just elaborated to make it more, so people really understood what a role of a board in commission, commissioner is all about. And that's why, that's where this started. Am I correct?
Yeah, I think our last book was like eight pages in length.
Yeah, and then we went to this, and we really, we really anguished over what we included in this.
So I think, just quickly, just a comment, the town council rules and procedure are updated typically right after the election, that's. So each election cycle, they get updated, so that is certainly something after November, whoever's sitting here could bring forward those suggestions too.
Thank you, because.
I mean, there's nothing saying we can't amend it in the process, but I know it automatically happens after that.
No, and I hear your good points about this being a document primarily covering boards and commissions, but now that we are explicitly mentioning liaisons, which we are liaisons, as long as then, moving forward, we are held accountable explicitly with this regard in that document, then that would cover this, that's fine.
I think that's a great.
Because if we're talking about it, let's make sure we're held accountable as well, that's all.
Yeah.
Thank you for tolerating my.
No, that was a good dialogue, thank you.
Thank you. Good news, we're back live.
Okay.
So, on page ten, you'll notice we still have a reference to a tape recorder. We are not utilizing those any longer, we actually do most of it through Zoom, and we do have a backup of digital recorders in my office, so those are still referenced here as well.
I found a tape recorder, by the way.
Did you?
I did.
I have a bunch of tapes downstairs, if you'd like to listen to all.
I'm good, I have video of it, so.
I know, I gave you those too.
Yeah.
And then, of course, the last one, as we were discussing, was under appendix A for the definition of liaisons and the minor change to make it listed as council liaison. And then FOI laws are all the same, so those are all proposed changes either from the recommendations from Deputy Mayor Padre, or as I was looking through the booklet.
Can I have a question? Is a digital recorder available?
I forgot about that.
In the town manager's office or in the superintendent's schools?
I can't say on the superintendent's.
So why don't we check before we remove that, that if they, to see if they have a digital recorder? Because you're saying a tape recorder is available for use from the office of town manager, superintendent's schools. So if there's still one
Yeah, we can check.
available, let's leave superintendent's schools there.
Yeah, we can see where they're at on that. I'm assuming that they are probably, wouldn't have one any longer, they're probably on the Google meets as well, whether they even have a digital one at this point.
Let's check, just.
Because I know we did buy quite a few of them when we were in the old building.
Right.
But we'll touch base with them and just double check.
So, Counselor, we've had quite a discussion tonight. Do we wanna move this to our next agenda for action instead of doing that tonight, correct?
It just, I mean, that gives us an opportunity.
Did you see a clean version and final edits?
That's fine.
I was ready to take action tonight, just because that's our normal procedure, but hearing all the discussion and suggestions, maybe we look at a clean copy next time, and then we can take action.
Thanks. That's good.
Okay. All right, so we'll move that to next agenda, and we will move on now to item F, which is receipt of TPZ referral, Connecticut General Statute eight dash twenty-four, easement for Egress ramp at ten forty-two Main Street. And so you will see, we did receive a favorable response. You guys can certainly read the memo yourselves, and this is again that parking, in the municipal parking lot behind the current flowers et cetera building, they're looking for a ramp and some changes in the rear of that building to make it more accessible for the business as it's gonna be moving to the back of that building, I believe, so.
And Mayor, for the next three items, Mr. Dixon is available electronically to answer any questions you might have.
Fantastic. Deputy Mayor Padre, you have your hand up.
In particular, I just wanna speak that I'm really in favor of the ten forty-two Main Street referral. The business owner has been a long-term small business owner in Newington. He is choosing to remain in Newington, choosing to invest in updates to the property, and that whole, you know, the Constitution Square, the parking lot there, that initially, I mean, this is years ago before even I was involved, but that was supposed to be kind of the start of kind of a nice downtown shopping, in addition to Main Street and Marcus Square, whatever it was. It's supposed to be the inner part of that parking lot, was supposed to be filled with nice storefronts and whatever. And now, you know, it hasn't necessarily materialized that way for all, for what the vision was. I mean, now, quite frankly, if you're sitting out there, you're looking at dumpsters and, you know, some blighted property, and I just, that, I think this is gonna hopefully be maybe a jumpstart, especially if he's gonna have a, versus, it's gonna be ADA accessible with the ramp, and having a little patio there. I mean, excited to see what can expire, so I just wanna say I'm really.
Counselor Page?
I would agree, and I think anything we can do, and with Mr. Hutka being here, having had experience on an even larger scale doing development, that over time, and you just got here, Mr. Hutka, so you're gonna, you're still, you know, catching up to speed, but we could look hopefully to do exactly what Deputy Mayor is saying, which is to encourage businesses on that side of the parking lot to have entrances and maybe even more eateries. There's the pancake there, I believe, the.
Little cakes.
Little cakes, thank you, and, and there's some other things happening there, and so the more we can do, the better, and it benefits everyone, so, yes.
Do it, Mr. Dixon, if anyone has any questions, but it sounds like we're all good with this one. All right, so we do have a resolution in our packet. Who would like to go ahead? Deputy Mayor?
Resolve, the Newington Town Council hereby moves to place on file a certificate of action for a CGS section eight dash twenty-four referral for the easement for Egress ramp at ten forty-two Main Street, received from the Newington Town Plan and Zoning Commission dated July twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three, a copy of which is attached to this resolution. Be it further resolved that the Newington Town Council hereby directs Tom Hutka, town manager, to work with the town attorney to draft the easement agreement, and that he is authorized to execute any documents necessary to facilitate the easement agreement.
Sure. Second by Counselor Camillo, any further discussion, councilors? Care of none. All is in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero, Councillor. Motion passes seven zero. Counselors Menke and Nigle absent. The next item before us this evening is the receipt of the TPZ referral Connecticut general statute 8-24 for a fire department digital signage project. Counselors, you'll remember this was brought forward to us originally. The fire department did receive a grant for the cost of this project, and we then referred it to TPZ for a look. And actually, I might just have you, Mr. Dixon, kind of explain the TPZ's findings on this one. If you don't mind.
Thank you. Yes, the TPZ, when they reviewed this proposal for the 824 referral, the main findings on that is, of course, when it was discussed about the signage itself and the potential impacts, it was recommended that the fire department will monitor those and address if needed, you know, including brightness and transitions of the sign and its impact to, you know, the surrounding neighbors. There's one neighbor who's a little closer to it, as noted in the staff memo, approximately 70 feet. So that might be an item where, if there is a concern of the neighbor, if there is a lighting issue, that shrubbery or something could be put into place to kind of resolve any issues that come up. The second one is that the hours of operation, when Tom LaPierre came in and presented to the TPZ, they kind of went through what their plans were for the hours of operation, and they kind of settled on 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM daily. So that means at 10 o'clock, the sign just turns off, so it won't be on overnight, providing, you know, that illumination overnight in that area. And then, of course, if there is a public emergency, it's recommended, of course, it could be used at any time because that's a public emergency, and it would be a town sign used for those purposes. Again, it's primarily for the purpose of recruitment. That is how they got the grant and how they got the funding to do it. And the third one, again, is the fire department to work with town staff to modify the sign design to incorporate the architectural design standards in the sign standards of town-owned facilities. So we can see, they submitted this updated plan about the time that the packet was put together. You can see option A is how they originally proposed, and if we move to option B, they did incorporate one element of that sign, which is on top of the brick pillar there, which brings it a little closer to some of the design standards, some of the elements that the town has in all of its town signs. So those are the primary three suggestions from the TPZ from the 824 referral.
Okay, thank you. We do have a couple of handles for questions or comments. Deputy Mayor Badreko?
Yes, regarding the accommodation for the neighbors, I'm just curious. So the thought is that there may be an issue with neighbors, but the neighbors weren't necessarily notified or asked or, you know, said that this is going to be happening.
To my knowledge, yes, 824s aren't like special exceptions or things of that nature, which require public hearings and notifications to neighbors. It was put out there as kind of discussed in council, discussed at the TPZ. However, the sign itself does have auto dimming capabilities, so that's something that they'll put in. Pretty much all electronic message centers nowadays have these dimming capabilities. Of course, the light comes up during the day, so it can be readable during the day. And as, you know, the light comes down, the sensors adjust it to be appropriate, and to be visible, but not to be a glaring light.
Yeah, and I can't imagine that it would be a big inconvenience or nuisance to neighbors, but in your experience, is it, is it just courtesy to maybe notify some of the abutting neighbors or the people across the street that this will be happening? Not necessarily asking for their opinion, but just to notify, I don't know, just a thought.
Yep, thought, thought well received, and we can look into that. As I said, 824s are just a little different procedure than a normal planning and zoning application.
Thank you. Counselor Anist?
Thank you. Quick question, what are the hours of operation for the high school sign?
That I do not have.
I think if, you know, these signs are going to occasionally pop up on town-owned property, I think there should be some continuity of when they're being operated. And I'd also like to see, and I know you're going to be working, but the design standards a little bit matching even the Liberty Bank sign that we made Liberty Bank do a certain sign a certain way, just so, yeah, once again, continuity of all of our signs. So I'm sure there is a way to make it more under our own design standards. But if we can find out what the hours of operation of the high school one is, I would like to know that.
We can look into that, and I will report back to the town manager with that information.
Great, thanks so much.
Counselor Page?
Thanks, Mayor. I would agree with Deputy Mayor Badreko. Hopefully, the residents, if there are any concerns, they'll let us know. We want to hear if there are concerns, and and we can discuss that, and I'm glad to hear that, and with the technology now, whether it's your television or the screen on your car, we can, or anywhere, we can adjust screens so that they are hopefully muted, and they're not that brilliant, but they're muted but discernible at, not say nine o'clock at night, and it wouldn't be blasting in somebody's window. But we do want to hear feedback if there are concerns in the neighborhood. But, but I think this can be helpful for our fire department and for our town, so thank you.
Okay. Counselor Rada?
Yes, two questions. The way the mock-up looks, I'm assuming this is perpendicular to the street?
That is correct.
Yeah, okay, and the second question I have, if it's following our sign stand, or the sign standards that we have on file from 2004, it says for primary location, which a firehouse is primary location. Sign shall not exceed four feet by eight feet, and I'm just curious, I'm looking at option B. Is that the entire sign, including the brickwork, is the actual digital sign that's going to be showing? Because it looks, if we're looking at the entire thing, it's, the width is definitely more than eight feet. And I'm just curious if there how that, how that's, how that's going to be, how the size is going to be impacted.
So we can work with the fire department to see if they can look at either reducing it. The, the way that the TPZ kind of referred to the sign standards was kind of working with the design aesthetic, again, adding some of those elements to it. It wasn't, you know, as I said, the sign standards, this is, you know, a town-owned property. It's, it's not a, you know, application where we have very specific requirements in our zoning regulations, but this is a guidance for town properties. This sign type is not in that guidance. Then again, that guidance was created primarily before the advent of this sign type, and then kind of coming to more uses by municipalities, so that might be something to look at when it comes to updating that guidance. But we typically look at the sign areas, it doesn't always include, you know, some of the brickworks below. You kind of draw a box around the area of the advertising, you know, what we consider signage. And you kind of draw that box, and that's typically the size. That sign guidance was typically for static signs, when it had just the board itself, and this is just to accommodate the panel that they're choosing to use.
Okay, no, that, and that was, that was my question, because I'm, you know, we were seeing different things on it. Again, you know, it's aesthetically, it's fairly pleasing, but I do agree with Counselor Anis that we are seeing we're seeing more of this type of signage, and if we want to see something consistent in terms of design and having a standard, then I would appreciate that we look into that, and otherwise, it's, you know, my, my concern is that these will pop up here and there and be a little haphazard, and certainly won't the aesthetic that we're looking for is going to be lost. But again, I, you know, I agree that this is something that not only will benefit the fire department, but certainly in any time of emergency, this would be put to very good use for the town in general.
Okay. Counselor Donahue?
I'm going on, this is, this is a two-sided sign?
Correct.
Okay, because it doesn't, it doesn't really depict that on the picture. The other thing, and this, this just came up, and we have in the past denied other people these kind of digital sign boards. Are we just opening ourselves up to saying, well, you did it for the fire department, why are we just the fire department? I think the library wanted one six or seven years ago. I can't remember. So, you know, I, I think it's a great idea, but I just want to be sure we're not opening the floodgates so anybody can put up a digital sign and just use this as a stepping stone to get it.
So since this is a sign that's on town property, you know, all town-owned properties are, you know, under the jurisdiction of the town itself. So it is either a council decision, or however it's been, you know, most will come, I think, to you for the request to put it in, whether it's considered a significant improvement. That, that's how it was kind of discussed with the acting town manager when the application came in, is that, you know, these signs in general, every sign within, freestanding sign in the town of Newington requires a special permit, so they're all reviewed at a higher standard. Now, as far as the town's policy, that would be kind of the town's policy as a whole, kind of outside of just the, the town planning department to make that decision. But as far as commercial signs, they still would be prohibited. Again, the zoning regulations exempt the town of Newington properties owned by the municipality from that regulation, and that's why they applied, and, you know, they got the grant for this sign. As far as opening it up, I think that's kind of a larger policy discussion for the town.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Camillo?
I believe the high school sign does shut down around 10 o'clock for message board, but it goes to clock and temperature.
It actually goes off totally to just a dot in the corner.
Okay.
I don't know what time it comes on. I think it comes on at seven and not six.
But, but the, there is no glare. It does, you know, it goes away. And for the high school sign, that just appeared. I was on zoning, and it really, it came after the fact that it was brought to us, it was already being done. All right, thank you to Chief LaPierre for bringing this ahead of time and not just going ahead and doing it. I think it's a great thing. I have one question now. Sightline, how far away from the sidewalk is it? Because when you're exiting that, in an emergency or whatever, someone walking down the sidewalk may not see what's coming out of the driveway.
So there is a site plan that's associated with this that was submitted. I can bring that up, but it was reviewed by the town engineer for sightline issues, and he reported that he did not see any sightline issues. The location, if you look at it, where they have their existing poles right now, where they kind of hung a banner, this is going to be pretty much the exact same spot as where the existing banner was.
Well, I'm sure you're able to do this too, and programming the sign, when there is, the trucks are leaving to go to a call, you can have that sign say caution, trucks exiting or something like that, and have it flash to get everybody's attention. Kids coming down a sidewalk on their bikes or it can happen. So, I mean, it is for safety, that's why the sign's there, so.
I have to shut out the fire department.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
I, great idea. I think the sign's a good idea.
Deputy Mayor Badreko?
I don't know, Counselor Page and Rada kind of triggered something in my mind. The high school sign and whatever, I mean, it's animated and it changes, whatever, but will this be used, you know, for real animatics? I mean, will they have the ability or, do, I guess, do we want to regulate in terms of consistency, whatever? Do we want like exploding fireworks or, you know, Smokey the Bear running across, you know, the across the sign, you know, with a fire hose or whatever? I mean, it's, I'm not sure we want that type of signage and movement on, on a main road, and also in terms of trying to keep a semblance of the colonial feel of the signs. Do you know if they're planning on, how they're planning on using, or can that be suggested to them not to use excessive animatics?
So my, my recommendation is, yes, I think signs should be a little more static. My previous history has actually been with reviewing billboards with the previous municipality that I worked with. Billboards were permitted along the interstate highways, and the primary one on those is, they do typically, signs have limitations where they say no animations, and it talks about the actual transition from one sign to another. You know, not having a faded, you know, animated type of transition, but having a smooth, simple transition that doesn't distract motorists. So my history with, you know, electronic billboards and signs is that it's always recommended that not to have those type of animations.
But can you recommend it to them? Because I mean, they have the, they have that waiver guy, you know, and we have an awful lot of stuff happening.
The waiver.
The waiver guy, the thing that keeps up.
Nobody else has.
Yeah, nobody else can have. So I'm a little afraid of some of the creativity that might upon this signage.
Mr. Hucker?
Yeah, I'd like to underscore one of the points that Mr. Dixon made is distraction for motorists, which is a very real concern. It's not just, it is very importantly, the feel of the community and just, you know, a annoyance to neighbors. But it's a very, very large issue for public safety to not have Smokey the Bear dancing with fire hose for passing motorists. It's a distraction.
It is.
Yeah, and in many communities, as, as Paul said, it's flat out illegal for that reason.
But when, that's why I think it needs to be emphasized with them and not, you know.
Yeah. We'll follow up.
Counselor Rada?
Yes, just a comment that I may have misunderstood, but when I asked a question about the, the primary location size, and it seems as though it's, could be inferred as a suggestion rather than a hard and fast regulation, number one. And because that was 2004 and we're now in 2023, and I guess I'm looking at town manager Hucker because this might fall into your purview or one of the departments, Paul, that it seems to me that it's time we revisited this and maybe rewrote some of these sign standards as these things are evolving, and we're seeing new types of signage and new types of technology that I would suggest that we revisit this and perhaps revise.
Yeah, I think Mr. Dixon mentioned that earlier, because you are going to be revising some of those regs, and this may be one that you take a look at, Paul?
Yes, again, this is a, when you look at the administrative letters, this one specifically notes specifics of the policies directed to the town manager and/or town planner. So this would be, you know, a joint effort if we were looking at revising this, and of course, you know, it is a larger discussion to have about how many, where they're located. And again, that concern about proliferation, you know, what, what is the main purpose of the sign and what, and what public need is it serving is an important part about these signs.
You good, Ken? Yeah, I am. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Camillo. I'll thank you in advance.
And this will all be done in-house? We won't have to hire somebody to help you with that?
No, this should all be done in-house, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we will do the very best thing you can do when you're rewriting or, and so is cheat and crib from other agencies.
Did the zoning regs over just a few years ago, you know, it was a big deal, and back when we were doing the signs back in 04. And, and then a couple of other times during that, boy, we caught hell from the Chamber of Commerce, businesses, everybody was in. And so they could have their sandwich board signs up, et cetera. So it took a lot just to settle the dust and, you know, move on.
It was, it was, wasn't it?
At almost 20, 20 years from when
You don't even know. The means we had.
Controversy, yes, surprising though.
All right, also, in our packet, who would like to go ahead and read that in? Counselor Donahue?
So, Newington Town Council hereby moves to place on file the certificate of action for a CGS section 8-24 referral for the fire department digital signage project at 1485 Main Street, received from the Newington Planning and Zoning Commission dated July 27, 2023, a copy of which is attached to this resolution.
Second, I want to promote any further discussion or questions, councilors. If I would say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Counselors Menke and Nigle absent. All right, moving on, we are at refunds, and we're looking at All right, moving on, we are at refunds and we're looking at approval for August eighth. Deputy Mayor Badreko, if you would.
The property tax refunds, the amount of seventy-seven dollars and ninety cents are hereby approved in the individual amounts and for those named on the requests for refund of an overpayment of taxes certified by the revenue collector, a list of which is attached to this resolution.
Second, my Counselor Rata, any discussion? The only discussion I have is I keep looking for my name to be there and it never is. Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Counselors Menke and Nagel absent. His approval of the minutes, uh, we were presented with the July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting minutes. I would entertain a motion to approve those as written. So, moved by Counselor Menke, seconded by Counselor Donahue. Any discussion on those?
Just say Counselor Menke.
Counselor, please. I'm so sorry.
Tim's a good guy. That's all right.
My hair is nicer than his.
That's what confused her.
I know. It's, we always get confused.
Wow, thank you. Uh, motion made by Counselor Page, seconded by Counselor Donahue. Any discussion on those minutes? There are none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Counselors Menke and Nagel absent. And now we are moving into the new business item that we added to the agenda, which is the Greenway Trails Expansion Planning Grant. Um, and counselors, you know, on your, uh, table this evening, there was a packet provided, um, that addresses this item, but I'm going to turn this one over to you all to explain.
Okay, again, if Mr. Dixon's here, I'm going to let him, he, he, he ended up with a lot of extra work tonight, so it's only fair that we let him explain this and take credit for the good news.
All right, Paul, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Um, so this is the, uh, DEP Recreation Trails Grant. I believe it was included, um, back in, uh, March, uh, at the time, actually February, around the time when I started. Uh, this was actually a, uh, deep grant that the, uh, department went for previously, did not get it on the last round of funding, but got it on this round of funding. Um, it was kind of included as a preliminary review. Uh, comments were made by counselors and corrections were made. And again, we continue to work with our grant consultant to kind of fine tune it. So, this is the culmination of that work, of course, getting the actual contract from DEP. Uh, they sent it to us actually on the twenty-seventh and they requested a fast turnaround of the tenth of this month. So, it has gone, um, through the departments and been reviewed and, um, is at the point ready for signature and this is asking for the authorization. Now, this is the connection, um, of the current end of the CT Fast Track, uh, where the trail currently ends, uh, just south of Newington Junction. This is a study, uh, planning study and actually a feasibility study to, to work on what the cost would be either to connect it up, uh, along the busway or to connect it up to Troutbrook Trail up in West Hartford, figure out how that could be done to kind of complete, uh, a complete network from West Hartford all the way to New Britain. Uh, that was a major component of what DEP was looking for, connection of trails within the area. There's also the historic resources around the Newington Junction area. Uh, this is what the town has looked at previously. Again, how we can connect this trail with that walking trail that we're kind of looking at in the same area becomes a destination along the entire trail network, something that's interesting other than this, the trail itself. What you see on the screen is actually kind of these two options, um, that were previously looked at from the town and brought over. Again, how to connect, um, the system, this kind of missing link, um, within this, uh, multi-use trail. And there's also other, um, applica, application materials, James, if you kind of move to those which actually show there is a greenway system. Uh, so actually, so this one right here shows the, uh, historical assets located within that area. So, that is a component of this application. Again, it's feasibility of how we connect this trail, but it's also looking at how we can connect those resources around it. And, um, then, actually, let me close my door real quick with a vacuum. Sorry about that.
At least you vacuumed.
You go back to another page there?
Okay. And then, um, so you can see the historic, uh, assets around that area. And then on the next map, uh, if you can continue down through, uh, James.
Hold on one moment. You're all set, Mr., uh, Counselor Camillo?
Yeah, um, you've got the old north school at the American Legion. The depot at the tracks was also the north end school and the town meeting hall where Newington became Newington.
Was the?
That's not on here.
Railroad station.
Got the old railroad station, but on the other side of the tracks, on this Francis Avenue side.
That's right, yeah.
Is where it all took place, backed by, uh, General Kellogg and General Willard.
I will definitely note that and kind of as we go forward through the process, we'll kind of develop out more. Um, this was something, as I kind of noted, right when I started here, um, we incorporated the, this was one of the, uh, application materials that was incorporated from the previous submission. Um, so we'll definitely, um, look at that and make sure that we have all of the resources in that area.
Thank you.
Thanks for pointing that out, Counselor. The other questions? Counselor Page?
I would just add while we're at it, in terms of assets and resources, I know Mr. Hucka has been asked to at least explore the, the property that I believe, uh, someone rightly pointed out was that we were a beautiful home with seventeen, uh, and change built home along West Hill and it's in disrepair right now and it's in a holding company in Farmington, I believe. And, and, you know, I've just asked and I think others have agreed, it doesn't cost a nickel to explore what the options are for the town to exercise our rights and maybe get involved in, uh, having that come back to life and be part of the assets and be part of this wonderful, uh, historic, uh, community. So, I just wanted to make note of that and hope that we can continue to explore that. Uh, and yeah. And then as far as this project goes, I think anything we can do to connect our bicycling, our pedestrian ways, our greenways to the network that's been built and continues to be built in Connecticut, I think is really good for our town. It adds to our quality of life, our environmental involvement, uh, uh, and our, uh, it's fantastic. So, thank you, Paul.
Counselor Camillo?
Yep, one more thing. Since we're talking about the, the greenway here, if you did run down the east side of the busway all the way to New Park Avenue, when you cross over Troutbrook where it runs under the tracks, we found a way to connect just on the other side. Um, that's where the Troutbrook route goes, the trailway goes. Um, and now Waples House, which you were just talking about, that was all West Farms. That was a, a farm that was Reservoir Road, Cherry Hill, West Farms, where the mall is, that was all part of one farm. And Mr. Waples, I mean, he lived until his nineties. He was a, an engineer. He was a wonderful guy. So.
Great. Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, Paul, I want to thank you for not, you know, giving up on this after the first rejection. Um, try, try, try again. Um, and I think, um, certainly all of us on this council have been talking about walkability and bikeability and whatever. So, this is, this is absolutely wonderful. And then, and I know from the New Britain Station, they're exploring, um, a trail to Plainville. So, I mean, at some point, this is going to be quite, quite an endeavor. Might be beyond my efforts at that point, but, um, you know, I can barely make the trail as it is now. But, um, also it's timely too because, um, you know, I think as most of you know, there was an unfortunate accident this, uh, week in Newington where a bicyclist was hit on Fen Road. And it's just, um, you know, we keep talking over and over and over again about it's very, um, dangerous to ride a bike in this town. So, having an established trail and getting people off the roads is just marvelous. So, thank you.
So, folks, in order to take action on this tonight because of the, um, time constraints, we do need to waive our rules of procedure, um, so that we can take action this evening. This is a new business item. Um, so we do need to, that first resolution in our packet, um, would be to waive the rules. Who can go ahead and read that in?
Resolved, resolved that the Newington Town Council in accordance with Section eleven, voting of the Town Council Rules of Procedures adopted February twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, hereby moves to allow action on an additional agenda item, new business nine A to authorize Tom Hucka, Town Manager, to execute the documents, documents necessary to accept the Connecticut Recreation Trails Program Grant for the Newington Greenway Trails Expansion with the State of Connecticut Department of Energy and Protection.
Second of my Counselor Donahue, discussion on the waiving of the rules? Any discussion on waiving? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Counselors Menke and Nagel absent. Um, as counselors know, uh, we do offer public participation on any agenda item that we'd end up waiving the rules on so that public is able to weigh in, um, on the item. So, we do have before us, the next resolution, um, is to authorize the Town Manager to execute the documents necessary. Um, I would offer public participation at this point before we go ahead with the resolution. You're looking at me like I'm wrong.
To the other way.
Okay.
You can, you can.
This is not, this is not our typical procedure. So, I always defer to James on this one. Um, but I know that we do have to offer the opportunity for public to weigh in on this item before we take a vote. So, I would say anyone in the room or any attendees may weigh in. And we do have an attendee with their hand up on the Zoom. I believe it's Ms. Lyons. Go ahead, Ms. Lyons.
Hi, it's Rose Lyons, forty-six Elton Drive. I do hope you go forward with this as I've been watching that area for many years now, especially when the busway was going through. And I find it ironic that the historic value of that area wasn't brought up until TPZ was in the process of, uh, reviewing an application. And I, if I believe, or if my memory serves me correctly, I believe that it was Counselor Badreko that brought up the, uh, historic value of that area. And Renata went ahead and tried to get some grants and I apparently was, got some monies, but it didn't get everything that we were looking for. So, I think it's important for the history of this town to preserve the historic areas that we have. So, please go forward with this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Lyons. There is no one else online. Anyone in the room that would like to come up? Seeing none, we'll move forward. Um, who would like to read the resolution in for us?
I'll read it in. Resolved that the Newington Town Council hereby authorizes, to authorize Tom Hucka, Town Manager, to execute the documents necessary to accept the Connecticut Recreation Trails Program Grant for the Newington Greenway Trails Expansion with the State of Connecticut Department of Energy and Protection.
Seconded by Counselor Camillo. Any further discussion, counselors? There are none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Counselors Menke and Nagel absent. Thank you, guys. I know it's a little out of the ordinary to have to add something and then take action, but I appreciate that. I think this is such a meaningful and needed project. So, um, glad we're moving forward with that. Next item this evening is our new number ten, written in oral communications from the Town Manager. Mr. Hucka, do you have anything for us?
Yeah, it's just an update. Uh, one point. Earlier today, I met with our state legislative delegation, uh, Senator Lesser, Representative Farrar and Representative Turco. And it was a very nice meeting and we all vowed to work together for the good of the town and, um, enjoyed meeting them.
Great, thank you. Next item this evening is Council Liaison Committee Reports. Counselors, who would like to, anybody? None. We'll continue on to public participation. Any member of the public is welcome to come forward. If you are online, you can raise your hand in the Zoom, uh, window. And if you are in the room, you're welcome to come forward. We just ask that you state your name and address for the record and that you limit your comments to three minutes.
Hi, I'm AJ Tiniakos. One twenty-nine Rosley Ave. Um, definitely not going to take three minutes for this. Uh, but looking at the changes that you're making through the charter here, um, under the social media section, um, the way it's written, it looks like someone is able to endorse, um, something that's racially charged or ethnically charged, um, without any kind of repercussion. Uh, it says like any public comment in any forum, but online you're able to share something, like something, um, and that sends a message out to those who see that. So, I think maybe adding verbiage that says like endorsing or something along those lines is probably needed just so someone can't sidestep this and, you know, endorse something that's like racially charged and then face any sort of ramifications. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Plour, two fifty Audubon Avenue. Um, a, a few things I wanted to, to mention. One of the things that AJ just spoke about and I, 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 before that I wanted to, um, uh, express gratitude for the spirit of that easement discussion that was had, the remarks that, um, Deputy Mayor Badreko made and Counselor Page as well. Um, I think that there's a lot more that we could do in that town center, um, to keep people in our, in our really vibrant, uh, community, um, on the weekends and in the evening. So, I think that's a really fantastic and exciting idea. Another thing that I want to express excitement for is that discussion about the, um, recreational trails grant program. I'm so excited for that. Um, we have really, really awesome natural assets here in town and folks already enjoy them, like the, um, Demi Young Farm and Eddie Farm and the parks that we have. So, any way that we can continue to, you know, I don't know, just, um, express that we are a town that really appreciates our natural assets, I think is really fantastic. As far as this discussion goes about, um, the adjustments to the guidelines for boards, committees and commissions, um, I just had some suggestions as the council continues to discuss that. Um, in two point three, this is proper official conduct for members. Perhaps the council could look into replicating language that already exists in that proper official conduct for social media section, um, just replicating that language about racial insensitivities, bigotry, sexual orientation, et cetera, those, those different, um, uh, ways that that information was laid out. That could be useful as a way to hold members accountable while still, uh, not running into any kind of removal issues or anything like that. Another thing, another section or, um, yeah, that, that two point five, the actual conduct for social media, um, perhaps in that section. And I'm not familiar enough with the rules of the council yet to understand if that, if this is something possible, but maybe creating some kind of censure requirement there. So, you expressly denote removal for folks that are not members of the council, but for members of the council, you denote some kind of censure requirement. Those were my suggestions. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Gail, did you get any insight into, uh, what's going on with Citco on Brockett Street and Kits Lane?
Oh, shoot.
I, I thought I heard a rumor and, but I, I don't remember what it was because it's like a couple of weeks ago, something just happened over here, somebody say something that they're planning to build something there. Citco, because as we all know, we can't trust an oil company. That's, that's a given in this, this day and age.
To remind you that our rules of procedure don't allow us to engage in the back and forth, but you can pose your questions and then later on she can certainly respond if she chooses.
If, if, or, it is an ongoing question, just keep us posted because, uh, it was terrible as they cut down all those trees. And, uh, so please keep me, or, you know, the town and everybody posted. And, uh, I have a question for John. John, your answer after, obviously, you're in charge of the, uh, NCTV, right? Yeah, I had called about like a week or two ago and I never got a response from anybody. And I wonder if, uh, you could, we could talk after the meeting if we could set up a time because I know you, you guys are available between seven and nine P M. On Thursday, I believe it is, who could set up a meeting so I could put my show on, uh, because I'm, I broadcast in six towns throughout the state. I like to, I broadcast in Newington anyway, but I like to broadcast on fourteen as well as fifteen. Okay. So, if you could set up a meeting afterwards?
I'll check in our attendees window. I thought I had a hand up. Don't see one. So, we will continue on. Next item is remarks by counselors. Oh, I'm sorry, Rose did raise your hand back up. Go ahead, uh, Ms. Lyons.
Rose Lyons, forty-six Elton Drive. I don't give up easily. I raised my hand three times and waited for the people in the, at the meeting to speak, but, um, thank you for acknowledging me. I, as always, have something to say about the ARPA funds and I know that there's money left. I have read the minutes of some of the Parks and Rec meetings and seems that they're still pushing to get some of that money. As a resident, I feel they've gotten their share. I'm hoping that perhaps, and I'm sure that social or human services has thought about this, because of the projection that the funds are not going to be available for fuel assistance is the way they were last year, that some monies be put aside to help. is the way they were last year, that some monies be put aside to help people that are, that are struggling to pay their fuel bills, that they can be given some help with it. In addition, we may think about, once again, I'm going to give my plug for the South Branch of the Park River, the Millbrooks and Piperbrook areas. I really think these are areas that need to be looked into. In our survey, one of the things that I believe was mentioned was that it doesn't seem that we get outreach to the people in the town and I really think our website needs to be improved. And since NCTV's Talk to the Mayor really has not been talked to the mayor for many years now, it's more of an informational thing about Parks and Rec and other things around town, which is fine. And, but I think there's got to be a way to reach out to the people, whether it be set up on your own Facebook page. Somehow I know that the mayor is very approachable and can be talked to. I do that whenever I need to, but other people know, need to know how to do it as well. Constitution Square. You bring up the fact that you want to make it, you know, a, a better area and we've spent one point eight million dollars, ten, twelve years ago, we took property by eminent domain to make a focal point in that area. And that focal point has been turned over to the Parks and Rec Department. And I was just in there the other day and I noticed there's picnic benches all around, which is fine for the concerts and things like that, but I believe they also use the area as storage for these picnic tables during the winter. And walking around, I looked at the planters, the planters are ignored, there's weeds growing. I don't know whether they, are the store owners' planters. Somehow I believe they belong to the town. The center of town on Main Street gets the plants in the summer, but that area does not. And in one storefront, and it's been mentioned on Facebook, that there's pumpkin seeds or some kind of seeds in the window and it's been there for years, not months, not weeks. And there's dead mice skeletons in the area as well. I'm hoping that someone can take a walk through that area because it certainly isn't the vision that Mayor Wright saw for that area when we spent the one point eight million and Governor Rel was here and the marching band and everything else. As far as the sign at the firehouse, I think Paul may have mentioned it, but I'm not sure. There is, I think, an administrative letter, number thirty-five, while it's not part of the TPZ regulations, it should be taken into consideration. And last but not least, you mentioned ethics. When is the Board of Ethics going to meet? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Lyons. I know there were some appointments made to ethics recently, so that is something that I, we had asked the Town Manager, I think it was prior, maybe James, but we should mention it to Mr. Hucka too, that we want to look at the Ethics Commission and they're supposed to meet, I think it's annually and that hasn't happened a while, so we're trying to get that back up and running. And then I think that the plaza that Ms. Lyons is referring to is the, what's known as the Best Market or Local Market Plaza. And I will say, thank you, Rose. I took about fifteen pictures just the other day when I was there. I drove around the back of the building, the front of the building. It is, I will say, I have seen a crew out there to mow areas of the lawns. So if there is an island in the parking lot that is just grass, they're mowing it, but the other islands that have other types of vegetation in them are not taken care of. It really is, as far as I'm concerned, a blight issue. And I, I was going to bring it to your attention, Mr. Hucka, so I will forward you the pictures that I took yesterday so that you can see them and bring them to appropriate staff. But I think we do need to reach out again to the owner of that property and just see what we can do to facilitate getting that cleaned up. There are still a number of businesses in that plaza that, you know, people are frequenting and those businesses are being expected to operate in conditions that really are not great. So whatever we can do as a town to help that plaza and those businesses would be great. I know we've tried to facilitate the process of getting another anchor store in there and we've, you know, it's privately owned, so we don't have control over that. We do our best to facilitate that, but, but in terms of controlling the way the property looks, we need to certainly, I think, take a peek at that. So I'm glad Rose reminded me because I did have those pictures where I'll send them over. Counselor Page?
Thanks, Mayor. We're going to Counselor Collins.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, thank you.
No, 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 I just want to make sure I was doing what I should do. I just want to thank Mr. Hucka for addressing a couple of blight issues that came to my attention recently in town. Thank you for, for doing that. And also I've heard from some folks in town, and this is not news to anybody here, that some of our older residents have expressed concern that we, that we have two fifty-five-plus communities. They would like to see, again, more options that we take part in making happen so that folks who are older and want to stay in Newington and can afford, stay in Newington and afford it, can have the option, and I don't know if this is legal or this is proper, to even designate X number of spots if this were to come to fruition above and beyond what we already have across the street for fifty-five and plus folks to move into and, and reduce their costs and stay in our great town. Another topic, someone has talked recently about making sure that any of the plants or, or trees that are in the dog park, someone mentioned that maybe a couple of them that are actually not healthy or could be dangerous to dogs. And I don't know if we can just take a look at that. If they were to eat the fruit or the, or the items from the, from those bushes or trees, we can maybe check that and asking to see is it appropriate or proper for us to have water available for the dogs? Or do people have to bring their own? And then the last was just that folks living around Mill Park, number one, are very grateful to Mr. D'Amo and the Park and Rec folks for doing a fantastic job with the park itself and with all the activities there. But they've asked us, and I know we've talked about this as a council with the extravaganza, as large and wonderful as it's gotten, what are the implications for folks around the park in terms of noise and activity and occasionally finding empties and this and that? And so they've asked, some folks I've talked to around that area have asked that we just look at that and walk and communicate with Park and Rec and see, can we mitigate some of the impact for those folks living around the park? So that's all I got tonight. Thanks.
I know, I've, I've gotten those same complaints mostly about not just the events, but the level of noise that is with the microphone and the sound system and all of that. So, yeah, it's something we brought up before, but you're right, it never hurts bringing up again.
We want greater attention, what we want to respect.
We have to be respectful of the neighborhood. Yeah, agreed. Deputy Mayor Badreko?
Yeah, just really quickly, Mr. Toward, last time I talked to Paul, he said he would, you know, notify me if there were any changes, but I'll just shoot him an email tomorrow just to see if there's anything with Citco. And I do believe Rose was talking about the Constitution. I mean, I agree with everything you said about the Best Market, but because it was that one point eight million dollar, the big.
Oh, that I know she was talking about, the Constitution. Then she made a reference to a shopping plaza and I'm.
No, I think, because she had told a lot of times about the planters, you know, being dead and that water and the dead mice.
Okay.
Both areas need to be addressed, but at least the one in Constitution Plaza can be looked at by us because it's our responsibility. And, yeah, Counselor Page, I agree. We brought up so many times to Parks and Rec regarding, in fact, you know, one of the neighbors, I mean, I'm sure it was time for her to move on anyways, but one of the big reasons she moved and sold her home was because of the, the traffic and the noise and whatever. And we've been told repeatedly, well, you know, studies have shown that people's property values improve when they're near a park. And that's true if you're near a big park like, you know, Central Park or Walnut Hill Park or whatever, but this is a very small park and the noise levels and the crowds and the parking, I'm not quite sure really enhances the value of any of the properties. So, but we, we need to be cognizant of that.
I know, I just keep thinking about if I had a young child that I was trying to put to sleep at a certain hour, that would be difficult.
Yeah, Ms. Hucka, yes, I, I am president of NCTV and I'm actually embarrassed to say I am the administrator of the voicemail system and I don't know how to get into it. So, yeah, yeah, I, I, it's, I set it up and I must have set up some password that I don't remember. So I have to call the company and beg them to reset the password for it. Yeah. Yeah, we'll talk real quick.
All right, I don't have any other hands up, so we will move on. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Seconded by Counselor Donahue. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Counselors Menke and Nagel absent. We stand adjourned at eight forty-two PM. Thank you, everyone.